Good evening, everyone. Let's get to it. Crab Forks City Council is commending the whole Monday, January 23rd under item one called Order 1.1. Welcome to roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Cavami. And Sandy?
Here.
Veen. We have a call.
Awesome. Under item two, discussion items 2.1, application for Class 5 alcoholic beverage license from Citrine Hospitality doing business as Expressway Suites. Ms. Lamarc, good evening.
President Sandy, members of the city council, Expressway Suites has had a change in corporate ownership from Advanced Hospitality to Citrine Hospitality, and with that, they need to apply for their own liquor license so that they can continue the operation as it has been in the past. The old owner held a Class 5.1 limited service beer and wine license, and so the new owner is applying for that. Police departments completed their review. No departments have any issues, so looking for counsel.
Comments or questions? Move approval by Weigel, second by Osowski. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Cavami has joined the meeting. Item 2.2, annual report from the arts re-granting program. Ms. Richards, good evening.
Good evening. Andy Swanson, Andy Swanson, I said that twice now. Andy Conlon can't be here tonight, but the main point of this item and the next one is to let you hear the reports from the Community Foundation on the arts re-granting program and from Visit Greater Grand Forks on the special events program. What we're asking for tonight is for you to accept their reports and then authorize them to continue to administer both of those programs in the coming year. So with that, I will turn it over to Becca and then Julie Rigg.
Thank you, Ms. Bomback. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. As mentioned, my name is Becca Bomback, and I'm the executive director of the Community Foundation of Grand Forks, East Grand Forks and Region. Since 2018, we've had the honor and the privilege of administering this arts re-grant program on behalf of the city. Just a little summary, this program provides much-needed funding for nonprofits in the community that are dedicated specifically to providing artistic, creative and cultural opportunities to families, children and audiences in the city of Grand Forks. This year, special year, in addition to the city's support of the arts re-grant program, the Community Foundation also received additional funding from the National Endowment for the Arts through the American Rescue Plan to help the arts and culture sector recover from the pandemic. In 2022, the program opened in February, on February 1st, with applications due to our online portal. On February 28th, we received 14 applications from organizations with over 409,000 in requests for operational support. Our committee scored applications based on a rubric of three criteria: artistic excellence and merit, impact and organizational capability. All applications had merits, and the committee recommended distribution of the full amount across the 14 applications. That was just shy of 123,000 from the city and 135,000 from the National Endowment on the Arts. You'll find the specifics of each of those 14 grants awards in my provided report. I pulled just a couple highlights for you. Of the total funding, 36% went to nonprofits specializing in musical performance, 29% to theater, 21% to visual arts, and 7% each to literature and dance. Of the organizations that received awards, over 71% have annual operating budgets that are less than $250,000. In 2022, these grants supported the artistic education and development of 5,225 children and hundreds of regional artists. And lastly, we estimate that nearly 61,000 audience members were served by these 14 nonprofits alone this past year. Grantees are required to submit an evaluation on the use of their awarded funds on or before March 31st of this year. Once all of those happen, received will compile some highlights and photos and get those to you. For the 2023 cycle, applications will be accepted in a similar manner to 2022, minus the NEA portion of the application, and the program will be administered according to the timeline in my report. We will pivot back to providing project-based grant awards as we did prior to COVID pandemic instead of the operational-based grant awards. We really appreciate our partnership with the city and look forward to continuing that in the future.
Any questions for Ms. Bomback? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rigg? A few brief words for the group tonight? Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me. I'm Julie Rigg, Director of Visit Greater Grand Forks, and I feel like I repeat myself every year, so I apologize to those that hear it, and new information for those who haven't. In 2017, Visit Greater Grand Forks took over managing the city's special event funding program and combined it with the event funding programs we were already managing. I had sat on the city's special events funding committee, I think, for about 13 years, so it really made sense to combine them, and I think it's been much easier for the applicants and a more streamlined process for all of us. This program, the main criteria include, of course, events that drive economic impact, the ability to both draw local and non-local attendees, provoke Greater Grand Forks as an entertainment, recreation and tourism center, quality of life for Greater Grand Forks residents, events that last multiple days, and events that have sponsorships from additional sources. We don't ever want to be the only funding source for these events. We also do give special consideration to events that are homegrown and those events that are created here and stay here, as well as startup events. We have four deadlines a year. They're always the 15th of January, April, July and October. Our committee is made up of both past, current and former Visit Greater Grand Forks board members. Some numbers for you, in 2022, we gave out $176,000 in awards for events with projected direct spending impact of $15.9 million. And again, that's not, that does not include the multiplier. That's just what's projected actual spending was. To date for 2023, we have already committed $36,000 in awards for events happening this year, and on my desk, as of the January 15th deadline, we have over $100,000 in additional requests for the first meeting of the year. So we're seeing this program definitely increase. Events that we're unaware of it are learning about it and participating as well. Dollars may be used for marketing, hospitality and event operations. We do not allow the sponsorship dollars to be used for any charitable donations or operate general operations of the organization. Just a couple of other things, we also manage an enticement program that goes along with this event funding program. That is when we commit sponsorship dollars through a bid process, so it's usually for athletic tournaments or conventions. In 2022, we distributed $46,700 for those events, and projected for 2023 is $31,250. So those are always items we budget for on an annual basis. And then, in addition, our services program, I'd hope to show you a little video tonight, but with the Zoom, apparently we can't have videos, so I'm going to email it to all of you because you'll recognize some of the faces in it, and it's talking about our extensive services program. I talk about it often, the VIP gifts, the promotion that we do, the inflatable arches, all those things that we do for events are very significant, and I would say as significant as the event funding program. So in 2022, we gave out a value of over $288,000 in in-kind services as well. So I will email you all tomorrow and share that video with you. It's pretty cute. And that's really all I have unless you have any questions other than the official visitor guide to Greater Grand Forks will be out next week.
Great. Any questions about the special events program from Ms. Rigg? Mr. Weber, yes, sir?
Mr. Phelan, when we approved the budget, we provided an increase for both of these programs, right?
You did. The mayor recommended, and you did concur in adding additional funds. I think we're at, I think, 150,000?
175,000.
175.
We did go 175,000.
The year we're talking about now, I think we're around, plus or minus around 130,000. So you did increase that, and our intention is to increase that over time to meet the demands and also inflation.
And you've demonstrated that you could use even more money, but...
Well, and I'm also happy to report with now getting past COVID, definitely our revenue is improving as lodging tax collections are improving, and that's how we're funded. So I'm happy to say it's been a very busy January so far.
Congratulations. So can we take a single motion for both to reauthorize the continuance of the way we've been running the program?
Sure. Motion by Weber. Is there a second? Second by Lunskey. Further comment or questions regarding items 2.2 or 2.3? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for coming in tonight. Item 2.4, 2023 CDBG and CSG programs. Ms. Richards.
Yes, this is kind of the final step in our annual allocation process. As you will recall, last fall, we came to you with a different process than usual. Typically, we do a competitive application process for both CDBG and the local CSG funds, but in this case, staff recommended and council concurred with a direct allocation of all of our CDBG project funds to the rehab of the Senior Citizens Center. So what we're asking for tonight is authorization to approve our, asking you to approve our annual action plan, which includes that as the main project for CDBG, and also to look at the recommendations from the Community Advisory Committee on the Community Services Grant and approve those. Your staff report, the final page has a list of all of the CSG applications that we received. Looks like 16 applications that totaled $438,500 for 150,000 that's available. The recommendation from staff based on the rankings of the Community Advisory Committee was full funding for the three highest ranking. You'll see that on the second page of your staff report. That's Northlands Rescue Mission, Homeless Helpers and Prairie Harvest Mental Health. For the next tier, it was approximately 80% funding until we ran out of funds, and that funds Global Friends, Red River Children's Advocacy Center and Salvation Army. I think the only other thing really of note or difference from when we talked about this last fall was the findings and analysis notes, the recommendation to establish a second-tier project. If CDBG funding does become available, the second-tier project would be replacing the playground equipment at Town Square. The funding is variable. Our bidding climate is very variable as well. So if funding is available to do that project, we would just move forward without having to go through an amendment process, but that would only happen if we get either unexpected funding or the bids on the senior center come in lower than estimates. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but again, the request is to allow us to move forward with our CDBG annual action plan and approve those recommendations for funding for CSG.
And hold a public hearing February 6th.
Correct.
Any comments or questions, Mr. Weber?
Ms. Richards, this was a somewhat unusual approach to CDBG, but this was an unusual year. I was concerned about it early on, but we had discussions. The mayor was supportive. Eventually, council was also supportive, and I had done some outreach in the nonprofit community, and I was pleased to see that everyone seemed to be on board with this approach. That hasn't changed. I don't see anyone here in the room tonight.
Correct. We do have Ms. Eislinger from the senior center if you have questions about that project, but yeah, there was some concern that this was a different process, but I think it's clear that this is a very good project that we're supporting and certainly eligible.
Wonderful. And a similar question as the previous item, CSG, we have, we budgeted 150,000 for '23 as well.
Correct.
Will that be indexed? That's more of a budget question, but I just thought this was as good a time as any to bring that up.
I think that that's the mayor's intent to index these appropriately, similar to the events and arts.
Wonderful. I'll move approval of the current plan.
There's a motion by Weber. Is there a second? By Veen. Further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for all the good work last year, and I know Ms. Rigg and Ms. Bomback are gone, but their organizations do very good work for our community. Really appreciate all that. Item 2.5, a change order number two for city project 8428, 2022 Concrete Street Repairs. Change order number three, city project 8493, 2022 Arterial Street Concrete Rehab. Duxer, good evening.
Yeah. Good evening, President Sandy, members of the council. These are the yearly projects to complete spot repairs throughout the city and locations have been previously identified, as well as those that develop during the course of the project. These change orders are to increase the contract amount for the 2022 concrete and arterial street repair contracts. Change order number two and number three will increase concrete street repairs, project 8428 by 26,500, and the arterial street repair project by 15,500. The overall contract will increase to 385,437. And staff would recommend to approve change order two for city project 8428, and approve change order three for city project 8493, and approve any necessary budget amendments.
Great. Thank you for the information. Any questions about the change orders? Any comments?
Move approval.
Moved by Weigel, second by Osowski. Hearing no other comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.6, create district project 8568, District 768, reconstruction of South 14th Street from 10th to 14th Avenues South. Mr. Duxer?
Thank you. This project consists of reconstructing the existing roadway of South 14th Street from 11th Avenue South, 14th Avenue South, and 14th Avenue South will also be reconstructed from South 14th Street to Washington Street. The existing street pavement surfaces are severely cracked, broken, sunken and heaved. The existing roadway surface is concrete that has been overlaid with asphalt. Records indicate these streets were constructed in the 1950s. The new proposed street includes some storm sewer improvements and installation of streetlights to meet our current standard. The total construction for this project currently is estimated to be at 1.67 million. Current city policy is to fund 80% of reconstruct projects, with the remaining 20% to be special assessed to the benefiting properties. The city share is currently estimated at 1.336 million, which will be funded from the Street and Infrastructure Fund 4815, where a total of 1.2 million has been budgeted for this project, which, so it's slightly under budgeted, but if the project, low bid is more than the budgeted amount, engineer will request a budget amendment at that time and present it to city council for the award of bid. These projects like this are, have public input meetings which will be held, giving residents a time to express or discuss any project-related items. This project is protestable per state law. So staff at this time would recommend approve engineer's report, create special assessment district, direct to prepare plans and specification advertised for construction for project 8568, District Number 768.
Good information. Thank you very much. Any questions about the road reconstruction? Moved by Weber. Is there a second? Second by Veen. Thank you, Mr. Veen. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.7, create district for project 8639, District 772, reconstruct 7th, sorry, 2nd Avenue North from Washington to North 18th Street. Mr. Duxer. Yes, sir?
Thank you. This project consists of reconstructing the existing roadway on 2nd Avenue from North Washington to North 18th Street. The existing surface, again, is severely cracked, heaved and spalled, which affects quality of ride and drainage within this area. The section of street was constructed in 1929 and 1950. The new proposed street will include some storm sewer improvements and installation. The project is also being proposed to include new streetlights to bring them up to our current standards. This is the first of a multi-phase reconstruct for 2nd Avenue North. The total construction cost at this time is 1.675 million. Again, the current city policy is to fund 80% of the reconstructs. City share is currently estimated to be 1.34 million. And in Street and Infrastructure Fund 4815, where 1.2, approximately 1.2 million is budgeted. Again, if the low bid is above the budgeted amount, engineer will request a budget amendment at that time. Again, there will be a public input meeting held for this project, and this project is protestable per state law. So at this time, staff would recommend approving, approve engineer's report and creating the special assessment district and direct engineering department to prepare plans and specs and advertise for bid for project number 8639, District Number 772.
Mr. Duxer, yes, Mr. Weber has moved. Osowski seconds. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Phelan, is it safe to say that a lot of these projects, we have the funding to pay for them because of the sales tax that was voted on and approved by the residents, right?
Very well.
And that's how the city can pick up 80% of the cost share on these projects, right?
Yep. I think it's fair, if you recall, if you were here in 2016, we did approve, the voters approved a half-cent sales tax, of which I'm going to say about maybe three-quarters goes to roads and the other quarter goes to the water treatment plant and for its debt service. So I think we started out, Maureen, at about 5 million. I bet it's worth more than that, probably closer to 6. So when we talk about all these million-dollar projects that we're going to cost share, it's because of that sales tax. And if you recall, also as part of the deal was, we moved our cost share from 50-50 to 80-20 to help make these projects more palatable. And I think what we've done is, over the years, one more thing is that we've done a lot of mill and overlays, and I think we've gotten through a lot of those over the last five years, and now we're going back to reconstruction. And so whomever gets the gift to be here, I don't know, about 15, 20 years from now, they can come back and ask the voters to extend this for another 20 years, so as we move forward.
Now, but it's amazing. The, I've heard a lot of people complaining about how much construction there is around town in the summer times, but also people being happy that we're really doing a good job of taking care of the roads. I really appreciate what the engineering department's been doing.
I don't hear about potholes as much as I did in 2015.
Right. All right. Sorry. I digress. Moving on. Item 2.8, plans and specs for projects 8461, 263 and 64, districts 584, 354, 585 and 763, sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, paving and streetlights on 41st Avenue South from South 19th Street to the South and Drainway. Mr. Duxer, yes, sir?
Thank you. These projects are for the utilities, paving and streetlights for the 41st Avenue South cul-de-sac. These projects are developer requested and are to be special assessed to the benefiting properties. This project has been previously considered at council meetings. It was December 19th where council approved the engineer's report, created the special assessment district. This staff report also includes a revised engineer's report. The developer did request that the water services be installed to all the properties along 41st Avenue South, just not inside the cul-de-sac area. Adding these does increase the cost of the water main project, so that's the cost for the revised engineer's report. So staff would recommend at this time to approve the plans and specifications for city project 8461, District 584, 8462, District 354, 8463, District 585, 8464, District 763, and approve the revised engineer's report for city project 8462, the water main serving 41st Avenue South.
Questions or comments? Ms. Osowski?
One question. It's not necessarily pertaining to this exact item, but when we, are we doing the streetlights? Are we ensuring that we're not using like the blue lights anymore? Are we back to our normal?
I don't believe that was ever the intent to have blue lights. I think there's some malfunctions within those fixtures themselves, but yeah, I believe that we currently use like a 4,000 kilowatt, I think, 1,000-watt standard is what, so it should be a clear light. Yes.
It should be.
To be asked your question, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I, motion approval.
Move, motion by Lunskey, second by Weigel, not Lunskey, Osowski, pardon me. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.9, plans and specs, projects 8610, 11 and 12, 2023 sanitary sewer repairs, 2023 water main repairs, and 2023 storm sewer repairs. Mr. Duxer, yes, sir?
Thank you. These projects are the annual maintenance and emergency repair contracts for the sanitary sewer, storm and water main. These projects include typical work items and time and material work items. These repairs are completed throughout the city and are mainly emergency in nature. Total estimate for this project is 332,000. Each project will be funded by its respective fund. Staff would recommend at this time approving plans and specifications and directing engineering to advertise for city projects 8610, 8611, and number 8612.
Thank you. Questions? Thoughts? Moved by Veen, second by Weigel. Hearing no other comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Duxer. Item 210, create districts for project 8572, District 770, paving 11th Avenue South from 58th Street to 800 feet east of this 58th Street. Mr. Danielson, good evening.
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. So this is a new paving construction project on 11th Avenue South from South 58th Street to 650 feet east of that. This is just south of the new water treatment plant and just north of the core scientific development that's been going on west of the interstate. This project's being brought forward in association with that core scientific development. Currently, 11th Avenue South is a gravel section. This project would be looking to upgrade that section to our concrete pavement with curb and gutter. This project would be assessed 100% as a local street. Currently, there is utilities under the entire road, so we wouldn't be doing any utility work that's already there. However, we would be adding some catch basins in with our paving project to drain the street. So right now, the current estimate is $456,000, and we're just looking to create the district right now. So we're looking for approval to create the district, approve the engineer's report, and then direct engineering to prepare plans and specs and get ready to bid the project.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Danielson. Comments? Thoughts? Mr. Veen moves approval, second by Weigel. Thank you, sir. Hearing no other comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 211, CPMA for project 8359, Urban Signal Rehabilitation. Mr. Danielson?
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. So this is a project that's been before you guys several times already. This is a signal rehabilitation project where we are going to take a look at 12 different signals in the city here and do some rehabilitation techniques, anywhere from just minor wiring, hardware improvements to just a full reconstruct of the signal. We just utilized our funds as best we could to tackle the problems where they were, where they were most severe. So this is a project that's being funded with a cost share of federal dollars, and something of note is that we originally had a federal contribution of $2.36 million, and recently, we finished the plans and specs for this project and found that our estimate now was about a million dollars higher than it was when we initially put the project together. So we went to our partners at the DOT, and we were able to work out getting an additional $750,000 contributed to this project. So that was a really big win for this project. At this point, this is a federally funded project, so we do have to go through all the standard agreements that we do with the North Dakota Department of Transportation. The one before you tonight is a cost participation construction and maintenance agreement, and this is the agreement that just delegates who's going to pay for what on the project and then who's going to maintain the project once it's completed. So standard DOT agreement, and we're just looking for approval of that right now.
Thank you, Mr. Danielson. Thoughts, Mr. Weber? Yes, sir?
I see that the traffic light at Cherry and 4th Avenue South is included.
Correct.
The one at Belmont and 4th Avenue South is not included.
So this project is just going after existing traffic signals. It's just a rehabilitation project. It wouldn't be constructing any new signals.
Oh, that's right. There's no signal there anymore. Thanks. I'll move approval.
Moved by Weber. Is there a second? By Lunskey, thank you so much. Further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 212, plans and specs for project 8575, District 594, water main for Highway 81 and associated area, Phase 1. Mr. Danielson?
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. So this project and the next two that you're going to hear about tonight are all part of the city's recent growth on the north end of town. As the city expands and grows, we have an obligation to provide services, protections and benefits to those properties that we bring into the city, namely, tonight, we're looking at the water service, fire protection and wastewater collection. So this project and the next two that you're going to hear about are the city's effort to implement those benefits to the properties that are now a part of the city. The first project that I've got here is a water main project, so this is going to provide the water service and... going to provide the water service and fire protection to those properties up on the north end along Highway eighty-one. This project is the first one of about three phases that we're going to do, and it focuses primarily on Twenty-seventh Avenue North, where the next couple of projects will go a little bit further north than that. Council has already approved an assessment district for this project, even though the city is utilizing some more unique funding strategies to offset those assessments. But tonight, we are looking for approval of the plans and specifications for this project and we've been working with consultants to prepare those. So with me tonight, I've got Mike Biibo to just give a high level technical rundown of the project. But ultimately, we are looking to approve plans and specifications.
Thank you, Mr. Danielson. Good evening. Thanks for being here.
Yeah. Good evening, President Sandy and committee members. As Mr. Danielson said, my name is Mike Biibo. I'm with ATOES. And over the past few months, I've been working with the city to develop plans and specifications for specifically water main on Twenty-seventh Avenue. That's a connection of the water main from about Thirty-Ninth, east on Twenty-seventh and south towards English Cooley. That'll allow the city to, to tackle water supply from both the south and the east and from the west. Traditional water main project will provide sixteen inch water main, fire hydrants, things of that nature. As Mr. Danielson mentioned, phase one of a three-phase project to bring water all the way to the north end of the newly annexed area. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Weber?
The, the funding, as it was mentioned, this is unconventional. Who would normally be paying for a project like this?
Typical water main buildout like this in a newly developed area would be a hundred percent special assessed.
A hundred percent special assessed to the property owners. And this one is being a hundred percent covered through alternative means.
That's correct. Yes.
Thanks. I'll move approval.
Thank you. Moved by Weber. Is there a second? Second by Bean. Thank you. Mr. Bean, comment?
No, I was, I was going to ask the same question Mr. Weber was talking about. There, there is no local share in this.
Right.
Counsel and President Sandy, we will have, once the bids come back, we, we did receive a sixty percent cost share from the state and North Dakota Department of Water Resources. And that's allocated by the State Water Commission. So when we get these bids, we will go back to the state of North Dakota to ask for sixty percent on the, on the construction side of this. The other forty percent is being covered by the, generally by the city of Grand Forks repairs.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Yes, Osowski?
My one comment is although I do not support the project that is being built out there, I do support getting them services to the ax land, so.
Thank you, Ms. Osowski. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. Item two, thirteen, plans and specs for project eighty-four, eighty-six, district five, ninety, sanitary sewer for Highway eighty-one and associated areas. Ms. Iverson, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Similar to what Christian brought up, this area has been recently brought into the city and we're bringing services here. So what I'm going to talk about is the sanitary sewer and then what that drains into is the sanitary sewer lift station. Different from the water main, this is all being built so in a three year project, so it's not being phased out like the water main. So you'll see the whole sanitary sewer. And then also similar to the water main, this is on, not, it's special assessed, but the city's covering all those special assessments. With me, I have Ben Williams with WFW and they're the ones preparing all the plans and specs. So he'll finish from there.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Good evening. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, President Sandy and committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss these projects. The sanitary sewer collection system was designed using the city of Grand Forks guidelines for sanitary sewer design. All the properties in this collection system are categorized as commercial users with no residential users. So the system is also designed to collect domestic wastewater from the existing commercial users. It's not designed for industrial wastewater. The wastewater for this collection system will flow to the new lift station forty-nine. That'll be placed at the intersection of Thirty-Fifth Avenue North and Thir, North Thirty-Fifth Street. The sanitary service connections, when they get connected with the, excuse me, the sanitary service connections for the property owners will be determined during construction. The staff at WFW will meet with the property owners and then we will figure out the best place to put those. The leads will not connect to their system. Will take it to the property line if the property owner agrees to give the city easement right at that location. If we do not get those agreements, the contract will place as close to the property line as possible, but stay off the property. Sanitary lift station forty-nine will pump the wastewater from this gravity system. That'll go to a forest main that's on Twenty-seventh Avenue. This lift station is also designed just for domestic wastewater and not for industrial wastewater. With that, open up to questions.
Any questions? Thoughts? Mr. Bean, yes, sir?
Make sure the comment, the, the industrial wastewater not from Fu Fang is not a part of this process.
Correct.
Great. Other comments? Moved by Weigel. Is there a second? Second by Bean. Thank you, Mr. Bean. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks again for being here. Item two, fourteen, plans and specs for project eighty-four, seventy-six, sanitary sewer lift station forty-nine and forest main.
Yeah, that's basically what Ben and I just went over. So if you have any other questions, but.
Okay, so we just moved by Weigel. Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Lunskey. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item two, fifteen, backflow prevention and cross-connection control program. Mr. Hanson, good evening. It's always great when you join us.
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. I'm here tonight to inform you of some upcoming changes in the water department related to a new program that came out from North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality, which I'm going to go with DEQ from now on. Last year, DEQ introduced a backflow prevention and cross-contamination control program that applied to all public water systems in North Dakota. In a nutshell, this program requires water systems to enforce existing North Dakota administrative code and state plumbing, plumbing code related to backflow and cross-connection. Just so you're aware, cross-connection is essentially a potential of drinking water coming into contact with any sort of contaminant that could make people sick. And backflow is an undesired reverse in flow in water. So essentially, if the water comes into your home and then something in your home, like a pump or a overpressured water heater, would push that water back out into the water system where it could go to someone else's home, that's backflow. So the two of them by themselves really don't cause a whole lot of concern, but when you have a chance for contamination and backflow at the same time, you could be pushing hazardous materials back out into the drinking water system that could affect everyone. So in order to reduce this risk, DEQ is requiring all systems to develop a program to eliminate our backflow prevention and cross-contamination control program. We have to submit an annual report related to preventative measures taken and enforcement. When this program was introduced last year, it only required us to protect city buildings, city-owned buildings. So we went through and wrote a program and replumbed a bunch of city buildings to get in compliance with this. And then after a review, DEQ came back and said, we want this to apply to all, all users in the system. So all residential, commercial, industrial, everyone in town, this needs to apply to now. So due to this change, we had to go back and write a new policy, which is attached. All the codes related to enforcing this are also attached to your staff report. So we worked with the inspections department and came up with the policy and we are going to enforce it together. Inspections is going to enforce installation of backflow prevention devices when needed per North Dakota Plumbing Code. The water department will enforce annual testing of existing devices and we will submit the state report. Since this new policy requires installation of devices and annual testing of all devices in the system, it's going to cause a cost for citizens of Grand Forks. That's the reason we came here to present it to you before we started notifying people and, I mean, before we caused a fuss, we thought we should tell everyone. Our next steps are notify plumbers, irrigation contractors and fire suppression contractors of the changes and what will be required of them. Notify property owners with known backflow prevention devices and what's required of them. Survey our system and find possible cross-connections. We would let plan to use the rest of this year for notification, public outreach and training and hope to begin enforcement of annual testing in 2024. Questions?
So Mr. Hanson, so people that live in older parts of town, let me make sure I understand this correctly. If you, if I've got an older home in an older part of town that doesn't have a backflow stopper.
If, if you don't, if you're a residential home and you don't have a sprinkler system or a pressure boosting pump, it doesn't apply to you.
Got it.
If you have a pump that boosts the pressure because you, I don't know, if you have a large bathtub or a jacuzzi and it boosts the pressure, you would have to put a device on the pump, not on your whole home. If you have a sprinkler system at your home that's plumbed into the domestic, you would have to have a device at the sprinkler system, not for your whole home. So.
Got it.
Sprinkler systems are already mandated.
So it's not going to, the majority of the homeowners in town, it's not going to cost them money?
I would say the main thing is going to be people that have outdoor irrigation systems are going to have to pay to get that device tested.
Oh.
And they've never.
Annually?
Annually. That's what's in plumbing code, says once a year.
And so who's, who's, this is the state of North Dakota? Where did this requirement come from out of the state of North Dakota?
It's always been in plumbing code and it's never been enforced, not only in Grand Forks, but essentially just in the state in general. It hasn't been enforced. Someone, someone said something and now it is being enforced is essentially what it is.
That's good stuff. This is why people complain about the cost of housing and homeownership.
Yes, Mr. Weber?
Mr. Gostad, anything to add to this discussion?
No, I don't. This is, I'm hearing about this for the first time as well. So I don't, I've got nothing to, to add.
Any other comments or questions? So you're not asking for our approval because this is information only?
I mean, it's, we're essentially following state guidelines. So I, there's not a lot we can do. We kind of have to.
We can, we could. So I mean, I think we will all agree that bad, cross-contamination of water in our system would be bad. I think we will all agree with that. Have, has there been an instance that you're aware of that there's been cross-contamination within the Grand Forks system?
No, there has been in other cities. There was one in, I guess I won't say the name of the city.
Sure.
There was one that happened recently where someone had a frozen water line and thought they decided they would pump, dump a bunch of antifreeze in there. And then it became pressurized and got out into the, the city and caused a bit of a problem. So I think that may have been what started it, but I'm not certain.
Okay.
I guess the only way to avoid this would be to un-adopt North Dakota Plumbing Code and make our own plumbing code.
Sure. Mr. Bean, yes, sir? So would this be done, you said annually?
The devices would have to be inspected annually, yes. They would have to be tested by a certified tester once a year.
I, I'm trying to think of some ways to ease into this. If you did it under a different schedule, like every other year or did something so it wasn't so.
It, I, I agree. It's in, it says it in the plumbing code that it has to be annually.
Annual. Do you know who, are there just a variety of people that do these tests? You can go to your local, there aren't Yellow Pages anymore. I can Google, water pressure tester, Grand Forks and find somebody that's waiting for me to call?
That's one reason why we want to not implement it until next year is there's very few. We think that irrigation contractors and fire suppression contractors, it would most likely get people certified. It's not very difficult. The city has two people currently certified for doing our own buildings and it's, it's a four-day class to get certified. So.
Any, any estimate of what it's going to cost people?
For just a residential sprinkler system, I would assume a hundred dollars.
Every year, though?
Every year.
And then if you have a, so an outdoor sprinkler system, perhaps you have an indoor fire suppression, now you have to have two inspections.
Correct.
Couple hundred dollars a year?
Yep.
Mr. Bean, yes, sir? Is there a penalty if you don't do it?
I guess that's a good question. I, I could ask and come back next week and just find out what the, what the penalty is.
Mr. Gostad, is there a penalty? Do you, are you aware?
Well, if you, given the plumbing code has, has been implemented within the city ordinance, then there's more likely going to be some penalty for not kind of the general ordinance where you don't follow a, a city ordinance. There may be those kind of the generalized penalties that would be imposed if you, if we don't comply. I can, I can, with Mr. Hanson, I can take a look and have better answer for you next week as to the, the, where I think the potential penalties might be. But again, I'm, I'm, I believe you'd have at least the general ordinance when you're not complying with this, with other city ordinances, there's penalties for that.
Yes.
Yeah. I, I have to admit that I read this staff report this morning and I had no idea that this is what we were going to be talking about. I did not get that from the staff report. Yes, Mr. Weber?
In, in anticipation of next week's, when, when the council will address this, if we could have more information about potential fines or, and, and enforcement, like how are we going to know who needs to be inspected and if they've been inspected or not?
So the way we would start out with the inspections is we know who has sprinkler systems because they get a cheaper rate on their sprinkler system by telling us they have it and getting a meter for it. So we know most of them. The fire department has given us all the fire suppression systems in town. So it would just be finding the commercial buildings with pumps that we don't know of that have booster pumps and it essentially would just be as we find them. It's, it does say that it is, that you are aware of.
I'm sorry.
In the, in the, sorry.
Did you just say that there is a separate water meter for, for groundwatering your grass?
If you want to get one, it's optional, but you can get a water meter for watering your grass.
Does anyone else know this? I have a sprinkler system. I had no idea. I certainly don't have a separate meter for the, for that, for my sprinkler. Never, I'm, never mind. I don't have a sprinkler system. All right. Any other further questions? Yes, Ms. Osowski?
How much is this going to cost the city, like yearly, to?
The city?
Yeah.
I guess I couldn't put it into the amount of hours we will spend on it, but the, the enforcement of the, the testing will be the most time consuming as far as we'll have to find out, first find out where all the devices are and then ensure that they're tested annually. It'll be, so man hours will be the most significant as far as a cost to us. Nothing other than that.
Well, man hours is a cost.
Yeah, I know they are. I don't know. I mean.
Could you maybe, when we come back to the council meeting, could you maybe do some calculations on that, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Weber? How long has this been part of the code and we just didn't catch it?
It's a good question. I know that the current codebook is 2018 and it's in there. So it hasn't been updated since then.
Other cities across the state? Were, were we the last one or are we the first?
No, they're all going through at the same time as us. Like I said, it just was kind of thrown at everybody last year and I think every other city that I've talked to is doing the same thing at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
I, I think we, we have to comply because we're regulated by the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality. So now they're enforcing. I think it's been there. Now they're making a special emphasis that all cities across the state need to enforce this rule and come up with an implementation plan. And a lot of these concerns with these kinds of things arose in, after nine eleven, when people discovered all of our various infrastructures and how you could do nefarious things to our citizens. I, I suspect that's why it's in the code and so we don't advertise what you could do. But certainly, people can Google and you could, you could do some very bad things. And I think this is to help prevent nefarious actors doing bad things, especially in a, a public water system like we have. And we want to do everything we can to protect the citizens of Grand Forks.
But if you actually wanted to do something nefarious, you could cut the water line coming in, tap into it and pump anything you want to into our system.
Yes. Yep.
Okay. Anyway, don't do that, please. That's bad. Okay. Mr. Weigel, yes, sir?
What city was it again that ruined it for everybody?
Yeah, like Todd said, you can Google it. I would prefer not to say.
I can imagine.
I could tell you afterwards.
Further spirited discussion next week. This should be great.
I will, I will get those answers for you guys next week.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
And Counsel President Sandy, we'll put it under, the city council is in two weeks because we have a fifth Monday. Should take heat on that. And so we'll have Mr. Hanson follow up, but we'll put it under the information section of the city council meeting. So you have an update from Dan.
Perfect. Thank you. Great. That's right, because we don't actually vote on it. It's information only.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Looking forward to seeing you in the couple of weeks.
I have the next one, too.
Thank you. Okay, and you have the next one. Item two, sixteen, the annual weed board meeting and noxious weed annual survey report?
Okay, I did forget my notes on this one, so I'm looking at my phone, but. But in compliance with North Dakota Department of Agriculture, the city has to have a weed officer and a weed board. The weed officer is me. Our longtime weed officer retired last year, so this is my first time doing this. The members of the weed board are the mayor and city council. Our, the main role of the weed board is to hold one annual meeting and submit the noxious weed report. The noxious weed report is in your staff report and I'm hoping that next, the next city council meeting can be our annual meeting to fill that obligation. Spraying in the city is all done by contractors. They, we give them a list of places that we think need sprayed. We also take concerns from the citizens and spray those areas. It's all compiled and put into that report. It's mostly Greenway, flood control, English Cooley and citizen concerns. And that is about all I have for that.
Any questions? Mr. Veen?
So, yeah, I, I'm glad you brought that up. Along the English Cooley at various locations, there are weeds going. If there is a concern, the residents can give you a call when they see that kind of thing?
I mean, on, on city, the city property, so.
What about on private property?
Well, if they have a concern, we would be the ones who would try to address that with that property owner.
With the property owner.
And if we couldn't resolve, couldn't resolve it, we would hire someone to spray it and then it would be the responsibility of that property owner to pay for it.
So you have both the responsibility of maintaining our own property and then overseeing that others are maintaining their own property, too?
Yes, but I believe the authority for the private property is more at Public Health to enforce that portion of it, like to, to make someone spray the weeds.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Hanson? Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Appreciate it. Do you need a, you need a motion and a second and an approval on your report or file and receive and file?
Yes.
I think you should move it to city council for the full board meeting two weeks from today.
Great. Moved by Osowski, seconded by Weigl. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post the same sign. Mr. Carries unanimously. Thank you. Appreciate it. Under item three, other items, 3.1, the legislative update, Mr. Bernstrom?
Yes, Mr. Sandy, members of the city council. So going on this week, yes, so as of 20 minutes ago, there are 939 bills officially filed by the North Dakota State Legislature. City of Grand Forks Legislative Committee, we're tracking 80 of those. Today was the deadline for the Senate to get all their bills in, that the House had their deadline last week. So I'm not sure, unless there's a delay somewhere in, in, in council, somewhere at, at the, at the state legislature, at the state Capitol, this may be our bill total, but we'll know that in, in a couple of days. So what we're keeping track of this week, today, this morning, Senate Bill 2240, which was based retention grants at $500,000 for the Grand Forks community for retent, for the term brick, right? And so representatives from Fargo, Minot and Grand Forks were in Bismarck. Mayor Bochensky submitted testimony in support of this bill. It did come out of committee with a 15-nothing due pass vote, so that'll go to the Senate floor. Throughout the week, and, and Mr. Veen, you know this as well as anybody, the, the Water Resources Bill is gonna be in committee probably until the final week before crossover and that'll be in committee on the other side until the final week of the session. So that is, that is on every week. We're keeping tabs on that for municipal water supply concerns and then also River Valley water supply. Mayor Bochensky testified in Bismarck on that bill last week. They're doing committee work throughout the way. And that, that's a big bill. Tomorrow, we have submitted testimony in support of Senate Bill 2275. If you remember when we were talking about our priorities, we were talking about Perry Dog funding and how the, the oil, oil revenue comes in and they have these buckets that it fills up. And one of the buckets is non-oil revenue cities and counties and stuff. Well, that bucket is in there and it was hard to budget with how much money was gonna come to us because that bucket was behind a big bucket at the state level that was $400 million. So what they're doing with this bill, 2275, is taking that $400 million bucket out. So easier for cities and counties to budget the Perry Dog funding and it'll make it more reliable to get here. We, we have provided testimony in support of that bill and it sounds like from the legislature, League of Cities and everything, that that, that bill will, will have some steam and it will, it will pass, we hope. Senate Bill 2183 is the snow removal grants. That is the amount of snow that has happened in North Dakota so far this year. And it's for communities that have spent 200% more than they normally do over a five-year average, can get some of that money paid back by the state. 200% is a large number. We think it's a good program for you get winters like this so far, although the past month has been good, right? But there are articles in the paper about all the snow removal they're doing. And so we support this bill, but we've said, is that 200% a number that could move? I watched the committee hearing last week and that was all they talked about, of potentially moving that 200%, but they didn't land on anything. So right now it still sits at that 200%. And then towards the end of this week, we have two more ND-PERS-related bills. First one is House Bill 1486. This was introduced last week. This bill is much like the previous two that we testified in opposition to, which would kill the defined benefits main plan for, for the pension plan. But what this one does is as opposed to the state picking up the tab for the unfunded liability, they'll dump it to the political subdivisions. So I believe it was RHR Director Tangi, who I said, said it pretty, pretty well at the, at our meeting last week. She goes, that could cripple some communities and they, they mandate that it needs to be paid off in 20 years. So that bill is being heard on Thursday in House Government and Veterans Affairs. I've already talked with Tangi in HR and she, she's planning on submitting testimony in opposition to that. Another PERS bill is coming up on Friday on the Senate side. This one will keep the PERS defined benefit plan open. It will fund some of the unfunded liability from the state level and then the rest will get picked up by the local political subs. Sounds great. The only problem with this bill is it doesn't define what that local share would be. The actuarial reports, is that right? Actuarial, there we go. I believe it's coming out in March. So we don't know what that local share will be on that bill. So once we get that, we're watching this one. We're, we're staying neutral to it. But we're not sure what that local share is gonna be and that's gonna be heard on, on Friday morning. So we're keeping an eye on that. Other than that, I'm open for any questions or any comment from our chair, Mr. Weber?
John, great, great work as always. We also met with legislators Saturday morning to hear from them and we continue to meet Friday afternoons. Thanks.
Any questions? Mr. Veen?
Yes, sir? John, on the snow removal?
Yes.
Were they calculating that on like November, December, January, February, or is it based on calendar year?
So the, the bill has a couple of levels to it. The first, the first one is your average snow removal cost, October 1 to end of calendar year. And then there's a second portion of the bill, which is January 1 until the end of winter. And that's, that's for this winter. So it, to, to end, so yes, it's, it's in stages. And I think some of those communities specifically out west, where they, they maybe don't deal with as, as much snow as, as we're used to up here in the Northern Valley, they're gonna hit that 200% pretty quick because they're taking in a five-year average to where we did our numbers and we're at about 175% or so. We wouldn't trigger that 200% based on our current numbers.
So we've indicated support for the bill, but we'd like to see it adjusted to maybe something closer to 150%. Right now, as, as rough as December was, we would get nothing, no benefit from it.
That's correct.
Additional questions or thoughts? Thank you, Mr. Bernstrom.
Thank you very much.
Under item four, council member comments. Weigl, any comments for the good order?
Nope.
Osowski?
No, sir.
Weber? All right, Ms. Lunskey, Mr. Veen?
Yes, sir.
I do.
Okay. My follow-up is after the CPS review and there was no jurisdiction, you know, they didn't have the jurisdiction to, to act on it. That really brought about some thoughts that I've had about how the council is reacting to that and what the next step should be. And, and really it's bigger than that is my question about it. We don't necessarily have good venues, I think, for the city council to talk about some of the issues that we have and I'm probably gonna be more specific to some of the questions that have come up with Fu Fang. I, I know we have the development agreement, Mr. Phil, and you have presented that. And there's a lot of due diligence items that are in there that it's kind of complex to read and to understand. But there's a lot of items in there that are not in the development agreement. And, and some of them we've talked about in the past and I brought up things on a risk assessment that I think is really critical to the community. I'm, I'm trying to just throw out some examples of some things that I think that I would like to see the council sit around the table and have a public discussion on and talk more in depth about issues that we've heard even last week from, from citizens, but things that I know I've stressed a little bit in, in my due diligence concerns that I've, I've, I've got out actually back in, in 2021 in November. And I know a lot of that's come to play, but I know some of the presentations, even on water, I still take, I, I still think are misleading and need to be further addressed. But we don't seem to have a good venue for doing that, is what I'm trying to say. And I wish that there was where we could have some of those discussions. One of my questions is just the project timeline and if there's things on the critical path and, and what the project approval process actually looks like. I mean, we have a development agreement and it's outlined a lot of things that are being addressed, but when is it that the project is either a go or a no-go? Is there such a thing? And, and how does that come about? I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand the facts the best that I can. And we've had a lot of questions that have come up. Some of them have been economics, how we're gonna fill positions, impacts to elevators, the farmers and stuff. I don't know if we'll ever get clear answers to that, but I'd like clearer answers than what we have right now. And I just wonder if the best avenue for doing that is to have, not during a city council meeting, but somewhere we could, we ask those questions, have discussion amongst ourselves for how we would like to see things move forward and make sure that they are being addressed accordingly. Because we're, the, the effort so far is very significant and it's, of course, very divisive. And is there something more that we can do? I mean, I like to look at environmental risks. We have political risks. We have economic security, water security. All of those things I think should have a higher degree of understanding and discussion. So I, I bring that up in part because I'm concerned about all those areas and that's one thing. But the other thing is, is how can we actually have a discussion and get good input? Maybe even from specialists that are outside the area that can come and talk about it, like maybe what the national security risks really are, what the impact is really to the airbase and, and future, you know, rounds of, of closure and those kinds of things? They all are larger. I, I mean, in, the number of them maybe not be big individually, but, but together I think that there are a larger issue that we as city council should be on top of. So I throw that out as just a discussion item here tonight about how we might think through those things and possibly proceed. So that's my question.
Mr. Weber, thoughts?
It, it felt more like a, a series of statements rather than a question, but it, it's deserving of reaction. And, and I'll, I'll try to frame my own questions based on that discussion. We, we've said before and it deserves repeating, the city has not approved this project. We continue to work through the development agreement. And overall, I see the development agreement as an overarching risk assessment with a number of key issues that we're looking at to determine the risk to the, to the community, et cetera. Further, to date, we have heard reports on various aspects of the development agreement and I have not yet heard anything to cause me to vote against going any further. However, we continue to gather information on all of these issues. So for instance, the national security issue, we pursued the CPS report, but we continue to be open to any additional information that, that might come to us. We have received some very preliminary information about air quality. We're still waiting for more detailed, more comprehensive, final information on those. But to, to, to Mr. Veen's comments, is there a, a point? And I don't know if this is for you, Mr. Phil, or for Mr. Gavstad. Is there a point where we would say, we have now checked all the boxes and we now approve the, the development agreement? That we, we have now worked through the development agreement and we approve of the development? Thank you, Mr. President Sandy.
Council President Sandy and council member Weber and Veen. I think right now we are working with Fu Fang updating the, the critical path, if you will, with, you know, less fancy word, the timeline, is that we're gonna, we're working on that. I think one of the really major issues that are, are gonna shape moving the project forward will be the, the North Dakota Environmental Quality Air Permit to construct. And right now that permit is gonna get, be under review. It's gonna take several months for the state to review it. They're gonna end up here in, in Grand Forks. They're gonna have a public meeting and they're gonna have a public hearing on that permit. And then they'll go back and, and that'll be really the, the, the real important permit for a project like this to move forward with. In the meantime, we are working on things that are particular, like tonight, we, we move forward with the domestic pump station. We move forward with the sanitary sewer collection, the, the water distribution out there in the, in the annexationer. That includes the Fu Fang site. But the ones that specific relate to, to Fu Fang are the, the raw water supply that Mr. Veen mentioned. It's the industrial wastewater pump station that we're working on. And it, we're also in, in, working on the wastewater treatment plant of renewal and expansion. So we're also working because there, we'll all just, kind of a round number, there're gonna be 20% of, of the, of the volume of that improvement. So we're working on that, on how to size that wastewater treatment plant. So those are, those are gonna be big decisions that relate to Fu Fang itself. Those are the thing, items that we're really trying to perfect as we move forward. And so as we work through it, I, I would anticipate on all those, whether it's raw water, the, the wastewater pumps, the industrial wastewater pump station, the wastewater treatment plant. You know, we had, we had thought maybe we'd be on the construction on those three items this summer. Likely those are gonna be this fall, winter and into next construction season. I suspect Fu Fang's in a similar schedule. So I think really this is aligning well. As Mr. Veen, you had said, this is going too, too fast. And I think what's going to happen between now and when that air permit comes back, we're gonna have several months that we can work through these particulars. So certainly we can have round tables and we can, you know, palm the table and say, we want answers on this and we want answers on that. Well, as we've said, it'd be disingenuous if we just came back and we had answers in three weeks on something. So we are studying, these are serious matters. And I think with the revised timeframe, there's gonna be more reviews and studies going on between the spring, summer, into the fall than construction per se. And certainly we're moving forward with some of the annexation area infrastructure, but that's kind of where we're at and we're working hard with their team to realign what their schedules are. At the same time, we're working with Epitome Energy that's, you know, they've said they wanna get started this summer, too, and whether that's realistic or not, you know, who, who am I to say? But we're working in parallel with them, too, on, on their infrastructure component parts, too. And so I think to Mr. Veen's point, we certainly could have a, have a round table and we could go through that agreement to, to discuss the, the progress of all those various aspects, environmental, infrastructure aspects, and we could give you updates on that. And so that's what, we're working hard to realign our, our timeframe so that if you do call a meeting like that, whether it's an update like this or in more of a round table, that we would have more information with you and obviously have Fu Fang. And then we have to lay in also Epitome Energy as part of this update, too, because they're on a similar, similar timeframe. Regarding the, the economics of the project and the, the political risks and the national security risks, those are, those are less defined risks and.
It's subjective. And a lot of these, in my opinion, a lot of the things that you've mentioned, Mr. Veen, are subjective items that your opinion might be different than mine, than different than Weigl's, than Ms. Lunskey's. So I, I, I agree. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm happy to get together and we could get an update and talk about some of these things. But for example, on, on the.
But for example, on the air quality permit to build, if the EPA gives them a permit to build, are you satisfied with that they're going to meet the air quality requirements? Or is that not, because for me, I would say, hey, that, if the EPA says it's okay, I'm okay with it, but you might not agree with that. And that's okay, you're welcome to your opinion. I just, some of these things, I don't know how we all get on the same page.
Yeah. And I think that's a great example, to be honest with you, that I do think that environmental standards have been established and we're going through that lengthy process of complying with that. But I think the issue of odor goes, is not something that's a part of the permit that I think is a larger issue that we need to be sure is being addressed, for instance. And you could have the most compliant plant out there, if it isn't operated correctly, you still have issues with that. So do we, as we're looking at that again, as that example, is there something we want to do that would address odor even if it is compliant? And I don't, I'm not talking about just maybe a one-time thing, because I do think that that does happen, but I just don't, I just want us to consider what the options are for something as odor. And I, you know, I brought that one out quite some time ago when we were looking at zoning, but I still, I still want to make sure that we've addressed that issue. It was a citizen's concern. I go by a corn processing plant between here and Fargo, and I've stopped a mile and a half away and I can smell, I can smell the processing going on. And so I'm wondering, is that possible going to happen to our community? And I would like to just have more discussion and knowledge about it versus, and some of it would be just, is just talking to some experts. Are there people in the field that would be able to give us better data that we all could hear together at one time as a group and not have people going off necessarily in their own directions? So that's kind of what I was alluding to when I said, can we or should we? In some ways, we're having a discussion like I wanted to have right now as we talk about a issue, but it's not necessarily very informed. A lot of it is, as you maybe described, opinion versus what do we know for fact? And are there even facts?
Council President Sandy, when we've talked about this, it is true to say, North Dakota DEQ, they're not going to regulate odor per se. But what we've done in advance of that is that in, as part of the development agreement, odor is addressed in that development agreement. And so we will have some constructive criteria regarding what the state would say are qualitative. They're not going to be maybe quantitative issues, but they're going to be qualitative. And so they're pleased that we're working on qualitative issues such as odor. That's contained in the development agreement. We've hired Black and Beach to come back. And obviously we know all the sources of concern. And so as they submit, you know, building plans and all these various things, even air permit where the emissions are going to be, we're certainly going to have appropriate standards for them to meet. The other thing that we've talked about is the wastewater pre-treatment system, what's going to be covered and what won't be covered, you know, what kind of treatment technology they're going to have, how are they going to operate? Those are all things that are contained in the development agreement. And so every place where there's going, are going to be odors and impact the community, we certainly, that's part of the development agreement, whether they're quantitative requirements or they're qualitative requirements. Those are all part of what we're reviewing above and beyond, in some cases, what the state of North Dakota is going to require.
Yeah, Mr. Weber?
We approved some projects tonight in the area related to the development agreement, but not industrial projects. However, in the process of approving those tonight, I asked about how they were being funded. There's only one property that's being assessed for any of those projects, and that's Lot Two, Block One. That's the property owned and where this development would go. So I think that that's worth noting. We have not yet approved any projects that would directly benefit the development of a manufacturing plant, but we've put the property owner on the hook now for helping to pay for infrastructure up there. As far as a meeting to discuss this more openly, I feel like any evening, especially on a committee of the whole, we can request, given adequate notice, that we would like to have more information about raw water intake or more information about odor and that the experts, technocrats who have information for us would be brought in and we could have that discussion at the end of any committee of the whole meeting. I feel like as a member of the council, whenever I've asked for that kind of information, it's been made available. So we can't just meet and sit around and have a closed discussion because of quorum issues, but doesn't the committee of whole, committee of the whole offer the kind of opportunity you're discussing, Mr. Vian?
It might, could, maybe should, maybe that's a great way to do it. But after one of the presentations on water, when I wanted to come back and respond, I asked for it to be on the agenda and they said, no, it could only be brought up under council comments. It wasn't going to be able to be an agenda item. So that's the reason why I'm saying, okay, if it needs to be an agenda item, then how do we do that?
Certainly, Council President, and to Mr. Vian's point, we have a city council meeting two weeks from today. We can certainly put a Fu Fang USA update. I think when people have been asked, for example, on the raw water, we know we've gone round and round on that. We have provided presentations, we even brought, had the modeler here that presented regarding, from Colorado and presented. And so I think we've had some impressive presentations to include on our water supply. We're working right now on the River Valley Water Supply, not, you know, we've already described what we have today. We're already pushing forward with the state under a six to eight year bill on the River Valley Water Supply Project. That's going to provide more security. So on that point, I don't know how much more we can all do. And I would say at the end of the day, if you want zero risk regarding an agri business development, we're not ever going to find zero risk.
So, hold on, Mr. Fieland, thank you. So, Mr. Vian, we can talk, if raw water is still a hot topic, I thought we had moved beyond that.
No, not at all.
Okay. So let's take a couple of minutes and talk about it. Okay. Mr. Fieland, the raw water intakes are going to be downstream of the raw water that we pull in for using for drinking water for the community, correct?
Yes.
Right. Okay.
Say that again, the raw water what?
The pump station for pulling the raw water in for the corn mill is downstream from the raw water intake that we have for the city of Grand Forks.
Oh, they're the same.
The same.
They're the same.
They'll be same.
We're using the same pump.
There'll be, there'll be added pumps into the pump station.
Fine. Okay. So we-
There'll be a dedicated raw water system to-
To, it's dedicated. So we can turn it off at any time?
Yes.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, haven't we talked about building, didn't we talk about building a separate intake at one point?
We did, but that wasn't a feasible, that was one of the options that I think even Mr. Vian brought up and we decided to incorporate it.
Okay, we decided not to do that.
Use our existing permits.
Sure.
We're going to have, they're going to, just, we're going to add pumps to the pump station, the intake. They're going to, we're going to, we have two lines-
To the downtown pump station.
Yep. And so we have two lines that are going to be used and are sized up to 40 MG, going to go down, generally down the Demers Avenue corridor. The raw, we're going to have a new wastewater, or sorry, raw water pump station near our water treatment plant site. That's going to, you know, take that water and then pump it with two dual lines to the agri business site where Fu Fang is going to be. And so there certainly will be, will be checks on how much, where that water can go, because there's going to have a dedicated pump station and two dual lines going to that agri business site.
So, but based upon the utility services agreement that we haven't done yet, but we know that we can put the hooks into that agreement so that in times of drought, we can turn them off, in times of their, whatever, their odor has reached some level that we disagree with, we can turn off their water. It will have all of those checks in it. Again, we haven't built that agreement yet, we haven't signed that agreement yet, but I think that agreement would address a lot of those concerns. Beyond that utility services agreement, Mr. Vian, what do we need, what do we, what do you need to know? Where do, what do we need, what's the issue?
I think there's a couple yet and-
Okay.
Talk about it now. I disagree a little bit with what Mr. Fieland had talked about. We have two 30-inch dedicated water lines for redundancy. And we're going to take one of those water lines for redundancy and convert it over to supplying water for Fu Fang. So we lose the redundancy that we would typically have and have planned for since day one when we switch that over to serve Fu Fang.
Which line is, that's the one from the-
From the plant.
From the plant to the water treatment plant?
From the intake to the-
From the intake to the water treatment. Yeah, okay.
So I'm saying that's a concern, because we got to get the water to the water treatment plant before it can come back. If you want to talk about risks, our water treatment plant not only serves Grand Forks, it serves the Air Force Base, all of that puts things at risk. That's what I'm talking a little bit about a risk assessment, should we understand what those risks really are.
So if you know, if you know what these, what the risks are, if you have a list of the risks, do you want to share them with the rest of us?
Yeah, I would certainly do that.
Okay.
I've got a few of those, there may be others. I don't know if any one risk in and of itself is that important. Some of them may be. The water supply issues, we talked about that we had the presentations for, all were, it's all in what you use for the inputs that go into those, those studies that make the difference. And the inputs were modified from what was originally put forth on the original study.
Right. But again, we have the ability to turn them off anytime we want to. So this is just my opinion. Again, it's, I'm not saying you're wrong. My opinion is times of drought are irrelevant in whether, whether we should construct or allow a corn mill to be constructed in town, because we have the ability to turn them off anytime we want to, especially in times of drought. So that has, again, in my opinion, it doesn't have anything to do with whether we would allow a corn mill to take raw water from us. Again, that's just my opinion. I understand that there is risk there though.
Yeah. And I think that what the information, some, much of it's been presented, has talked about permitting and water availability, not about water available during drought. Then they're two different situations and circumstances.
Yep. So should we put water on the next committee of the whole and have a roundtable discussion more about water intakes and risks assessment related to water?
I think that's going to come back to you. We're always, that's under design, so that's got to come back to you too in the near future. So we can certainly, I just want to make sure we get the right people here, otherwise we're going to have a-
A show.
Yeah.
Yep.
And so you should well know, no matter who's standing here at the podium, we're not going to do anything to impact negatively the residential use during a drought. We certainly have policies that we can reduce the demand in our community. And I think that's, that was a good part of this, of Fu Fang, is that they're using raw water. And so that water's not going to our water treatment plant, it's going, you know, so it's not using up water capacity similar to Epitome Energy. They're going to use some of the gray water. They're going to use gray water for the water supply. So again, they're not going to reduce the capacity of our, of our water treatment plant.
As part of the engineering that's going on, I do recognize Mr. Vian's concern about redundancy for raw water to the water treatment plant for use by the citizens of Grand Forks. If one of the pumps are seven, I don't know how, if a bunch of the pumps go out at the same time and it's all the water that feeds the water treatment plant portion that goes to my being able to get a glass of water out of my faucet, we should be able to divert, and I assume, again, I'm not the engineer on the project, but I assume we would have as part of the utility services agreement, something that says if catastrophe happens, we can turn them off, we can continue to supply water to the citizens of Grand Forks. But knowing that we're trying to be an agri business community, we know that Northern Plains Nitrogen is interested in coming to town, whether they do or not, whether Epitome builds or not, we know that there's going to be a need for water. Perhaps adding additional capacity from the pump station to the water treatment plant would be a good idea. And we should add that as part of our midterm construction plans for our water to mitigate that risk.
I-
I'm sure that's going to be millions of dollars, I know that, but perhaps we should add that to our list of these are the things we should do.
I think we'll come back on the intake on how much capacity we want to add into. And, you know, adding a third line along Demers, that's not something that's been contemplated as part of this project, certainly. If we should lift so long, whether it's 30 or 50 or 100 years from now, those are the kinds of plans that people would want to put into place, knowing that that intake is a, you know, a 50 to 100-year facility. And if we grow faster and more, we'll have to add further capacity in our community.
So perhaps just front-loading some of that, even if we add a little bit at a time as time goes on.
Mr. Sandy?
Yes, Mr. Vian?
If we could, maybe follow up with a suggestion.
Certainly.
If there are items here on the due diligence that we might want to talk about together, can we maybe submit them to you and have that discussion and Todd at the same time? I don't care how we do that.
Certainly.
But I want to make sure that we've done and addressed, I think, the items that I think are really specific to the project that are concerning.
Great. Absolutely.
Council President Sandy, we'll, I'll plan to put in the update on the city council meeting. And if there are items people want a specific update on, we'll make sure that we have that updated with the appropriate people that can give that update.
Great.
And if I could, the development agreement and the information that I know Dan has given us is really comprehensive. I mean, there's a lot of stuff in that. And you give those updates in there and you try to, you know, tell us where we are. I think part of it would be, I think some may be more critical than others, that we could just try to figure out which of the ones maybe that we would need to have updates on. Some of it may not be as much, I don't know, but try to make it reasonable, because there's just so much information there.
Ms. Osowski?
Thank you, Mr. Vian, for bringing up the concerns about the water. I also have concerns about like Northrop Grumman and the base and the espionage concerns that companies have. Like can we get someone from the base to come in and say, we're okay with this? I mean, CFIUS really provided no information to us besides saying that it's outside of their jurisdiction. And I would like some assurance from the people at the base that they are going to stay put and continue to be parts of our community if Fu Fang is built. Can you work on that?
Ms. Osowski, that's not how the government works.
No.
Grand Forks Air Force Base will never come in here and say that it's okay.
What about Northrop Grumman? They're not part of the government.
Yep. I think private business does whatever private business wants to do.
It's still a big concern of mine and it is the main reason why I oppose the project.
Yep. Other, I'm not saying it's not a concern. We should take the, all national security issues very seriously. I think part of, part of the issue right now with CFIUS is they're vague for a reason. And it is unfortunate, but that's the way they work. Again, it's my, my opinion. I believe if you, depending upon who you talk to, will tell you whether you think they, I think Mr. Vian doesn't believe that they've weighed in on the situation because they say they don't have jurisdiction, whereas I believe that they're saying they don't have jurisdiction because they didn't find any issues. Believe me, in my opinion, I believe our federal government that's responsible for looking into national security issues, if they find an issue, they're going to raise their hand and say, hey, wait a minute, there's a problem here. But they're not. So again, it's my opinion. I think we had the, our attorney that's a CFIUS expert come and talk to us about it and she clearly said- talk to us about it, and she clearly said, they made their decision. So I think, again, it depends, it also depends on your point of view and what you want it to mean, right? Which is unfortunate, it's very nebulous, there isn't a whole lot of concrete anything to it, so. Further comments?
I guess I would just like to see more support from the community, I guess, and the people that do have concerns or have came out and voiced their concerns.
I agree.
Mr. Gossett? Yeah, Mr. Gossett, something to add, sir?
Thank you, Council President Sandy and members of this committee. One thing that, and I know there's a lot of information that is within the development agreement, but if you're going to have that meeting, that was the purpose of that spreadsheet, to give you updates, to allow you to review that and identify those items that if you have questions on the various parts of the development, and where you're at, and the quantity of these documents, everything is going to be able to get together for a meeting and we didn't listen to the direction of the man on the spreadsheet, just, it's not being that clear out, but-
I can't hear you or understand you, I don't know if it's on your end or on our end, maybe I'm the only one.
It probably is on my end, I apologize. Is it better or not?
It is better, yes.
Okay, yeah, I just encourage you to use that spreadsheet to identify those issues. The intention of that spreadsheet was to give you status and updates as to where the various items that need to be completed are at and where they're at in the process. And I think that hopefully will give you, like I said, you don't have to go through each and every line item, but for those items that you want to look at specifically, I think it will give you a sense as to where these particular items are. Not everything is, some things just aren't, haven't necessarily been reviewed and, in great detail, but like that, and CFIUS reveal. I think Mr. Sandy also is correct with respect to the utility services agreement, those haven't been crafted yet. I'm also expecting to do the analysis that will outline what the facility will have as well as the environmental operations, and that will sit even moving forward, so that they operate, as we understand, will be there, with the operation in the future. Last item I just want to touch on is the CFIUS reveal. You got to be mindful that the federal government created this statute and the regulations under it and identified the basis of the, the way we're going to be doing. As I understand, based upon our attorney and their experience, is that they do not review, and the way they're sizing up is, there's just no jurisdiction for CFIUS to pass upon this at this point. And I think they did what federal government said they were supposed to do, so. I would just encourage you to use that spreadsheet if you're going to have that meeting, because I think that will assist you in crystallizing some of the discussions that you'll have. Thank you.
And that spreadsheet, I'm on the city website under Fu Fang. Is that spreadsheet available for the public at that site?
I think it has been, if not, we'll make sure the updated one, it's on our website.
And where would I find that, Mr. Veen?
It's under a Fu Fang tab on the city's website.
Right, I'm there right now, would it be under, and I'm sorry for putting on the spot here, looking at project overview, issues, questions, there seem to be some documents, development agreement updated July 25th, development agreement amendments. I'm not seeing anything newer than that, there'll be, the spreadsheet will be available there under documents for us.
Similar to what we attached to the last time we briefed it about a month ago, we'll make sure that spreadsheet gets out there, and then we'll have it updated for the city council meeting two weeks from today. And we'll brief it, and if you want to highlight some issues, we'll make sure we get the appropriate updates, specifically regarding those areas. Just, we don't want to go over 100 areas if you're only interested in five.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. Further, Mr. Veen?
And Mr. Veen, I know you'd mentioned last time that you were working on updating the timeline, in a couple weeks you could have the timeline updated, do you think, too?
Yeah, we've had, over the last couple weeks emphasizing the timeline, and we're certainly working on ours, and we've asked for Fu Fang what their timeframe is, and so we'll have an updated timeframe on that, too.
So then, maybe we could make a part of that discussion, is there a point where we actually have a vote up or down?
But, in my opinion, and I certainly don't mean to be patronizing, so this is just in my opinion, when we voted for the development agreement, we set the roadmap for them for all the issues that they need to fulfill, to meet, in order to move forward with construction, and for us to give them, to agree to the utility services agreement. And so I believe that, again, the utility services agreement needs to be developed, and we should all have input for the utility services agreement. But I believe, as long as they keep checking the boxes that are in the development agreement and doing what we've prescribed in that development agreement, I don't think there's any reason for us to stop the project from moving forward. Again, that's my opinion, and so, and everyone's welcome to vote any way they want to on any of the issues related to this. But I could, Mr. Veen, I don't know how you and the mayor see, I don't know how the mayor sees it, but I thought that's the reason we went through the process of the development agreement.
And my view is different, I'll just say that.
Okay.
The development agreement was a means to do the studies that we would be able to get, and then we would make a decision. It wasn't, we made a decision at that point in time, if that's the case, that's far different from what I believed it was.
Sure, well, we still, they still have to meet all the requirements of the development agreement, and if they, if we don't permit them, give them the utility service agreement and permit them for water, they don't have water. So, but I think that, so I think there is, there's still a hook there that gives us leverage, and if we don't agree to it, we don't agree to it, right? So I think further information, which, what night are we going to do further discussion? Are we going to do it at the council meeting on the 6th, or are we going to do it? Because I'm not going to be here on February, yeah, the 6th, I won't be here, so if we could push to the committee of the whole, that would be good.
That sounds good.
The following meeting?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
I think that, I think that works better for me, too.
Okay.
So we will plan for the succeeding committee of the whole, and we'll put it under a standalone briefing, and no votes, but just keeping an eye, and that gives us a little more time to put some more information together, too.
Great. Okay, everybody? Anything more for the good of the order? Mr. Veen, good? Great. Moved by Weber, second by Osowski, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, most carries in the audience, please, thanks. Good night, everybody.